I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Okay, I need a motion to consent for approving in a minute from September sixteenth and October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll make the motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go on favor.
I oppose so carry.
Let's follow up from previous regular meetings, Mr. Squire.
Hello, everybody. We're just a little update there and the principals can can get you a little bit more details. But we just wanted to let you know that we'd have a process that we've communicated on opening days. Where kids know they can go to the offices, there's forms to fill out, this is at the secondary level. If they feel that there is some type of harassment bullying going on or they witnessed it as well. There is an online form and we are in the process of putting up around the buildings. QR codes in ways so kids can just scan it on their phone real quick and make an anonymous report. At that time as well. As we go forward, we were actually having discussions this week and I think last week as well. With Unity Day coming up on October twentieth, that we thought that'd be a great time to reinforce. The the whole concept if you know, if you see something, say something. So that'll be happening as well, so I'll turn it over to either Carrie or even to Freya. She wants to speak to it anymore, or if you have any questions.
Great evening. Yeah, actually, we got the QR codes, we have QR codes up all around the building. And, you know, at school, we're doing some robust. Pushing, pushing in classrooms and activities during lunch next week for Unity Day and we will reinforce like this is a. An anonymous reporting tool that you can use. It seemed the the witness statements are new and it seemed to be. They like them, they come down and they fill out witness statements and, you know, they know that something happens when they fill out witness statements, so, you know, it does feel like it's doing what what is supposed to be.
Anyone else, anyone else?
Well, at the elementary level, we certainly promote students to be kind. We do make sure our assemblies, we're having a patrol seven next Wednesday. Ms. Goke and our teachers will do stuff during morning meetings where they talk about bullying and where it means to be kind to one another. And the other thing that's really important that we teach at elementary level is what is reporting versus talent. That's a big one, a little one because they want to do a lot of talent, so that's one of the things that we had to teach the kids. But they also have, they know that they have a venue to talk at the adult building. Different items for kids qualified.
Similarly, at the high school, we followed the, we followed the middle school example, we did get our QR codes hung up today. We had sent out the bullying report form to students, teachers, to anyone who needs to report what they may see. For the most part, the high school students are a little bit more. More about advocacy for themselves, they will come to the office and they have been filling out the written statements. So for the most part, teachers and those forms are what really are coming into the high school in terms of students and finding out exactly what's happening.
So one of my questions is, how do we get parent involvement? In this process?
In the recording?
Yes.
So there's a link on the website that allows parents to report. And the links will go to based on the building that students is in and it'll go to the principal of that. We get a notification right now that we follow up.
Is there, is there any? Besides the link on the website, is there any other proactive measures or messaging that goes out to the parents?
Yeah, so we're gonna start embedding it into our, the bunch of the principal weekly updates. So that'll be part of that, you know, it'll be in their weekly updates to parents as well as when I do my. Every other month ones, etc., so we'll just. Promote it on our our social media channels as well. But you know where to go or where to find it and and make it. It's not very clear on the website and that's just because we're still trying to get the website. Cleaner up up in that regard, but once we get the our front page rolling there, it'll be a prominent spot there as well.
And Bart, it's also available in our parent handbooks. That the that the parents all see and get access to in all four buildings and who the DASA coordinators are in all four buildings, so they have access to there as well.
Thank you. Well, I think. For me, because I don't think we've talked about it together, but I'd like to, I think it'd be good to keep track of this to see how it goes through the year. And if there's a baseline now that you're like, oh, what we hear, I hear stories, so if we could. If we could get a handle on what's happening and the data that's behind it and like if people are. Concerned, expressing concerns or there's witness statements or the parents are expressing, if we could hear about that. When we get together. Monthly, maybe if get its own spot or we 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 talk about it here. Since it was formally brought up in the in the last meeting. So it fits here right now, but maybe we could. I think we'd like to pay attention to this. Along with other things, but we'd like to pay attention to this, so. But thank you for for all that you're. You're all doing, and I think too, if maybe if there's some, if there's somewhere where that and maybe it is written down. That we could look at, like what the. What the forms look like or what the reporting procedures are, what the protocols are, whatever it is that people. Follow, I mean, I just, I just don't know where it is and and I'm sorry, but the QR codes are just above me. So if you explain what that, what's the advantage to those?
You're, you can use your camera on your iPad or your phone and it just takes you to the form to fill out.
Okay, so then you fill out the form on your phone or iPad. All right. And I assume there might be something you'd measure like in these climate surveys? That we've talked in in links, there's talks about surveys.
Yeah.
Would that be something that we could?
Um, we do ask about bullying.
Yeah.
Yes, we do ask about bullying.
Okay.
A survey, we, we, we all did the climate survey within the last. Last few weeks, yeah, last month. So we'll, I mean, I expect we can find on that data to share with you guys.
Yeah.
I thought it was, it was very positive.
Good. At our, at our last faculty meeting, both elementary schools reviewed the climate survey data. And then we had some recommendations on tweaking the survey and then teachers looked at action steps on it. To enhance the climate that students are just worrying about.
And Mike, that data is available on our links plans, when you take a look at our links plans, the data is accessible there for the. The pre-cated two kindergarten hasn't taken it yet, I believe, and our three to six data.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, committee reports, innovation committee.
The grade grouping. Randy has sent us a proposal for a survey. To go out to the public regarding the reconfiguration and grade groupings. What is being proposed is that the innovation committee meet next week. And look at the survey and give our opinion on it and to see if there's any changes that need to be made before it goes out to the public. And so that's where we stand on that.
Okay.
I have a question, who is running the lead on the survey, I know. The liaison committee ran the lead on the survey for the mascot, so is the innovation committee running the lead on this one as well?
Well, we're giving our input on it. I know there's several issues that have been raised by the board members to me and I'm going to address all those issues with the innovation committee next week. And and see what their thoughts are on those suggestions.
Thanks.
Okay. Facilities committee.
Facilities committee also met last week and in attendance and who led the discussion was Scott Wolf from CS Arch. Members of the committee besides myself are Kyle Garland, Jamie Dorr and Tara Bachner. Also in attendance was Michael Petromali, Eric Besenfelter, Randy Squire and Leslie Cavillson. And. So so far. What we're doing is the heating system in the new high schools progressing. There's troubleshooting going on and they're waiting on some emergency lighting fixtures in the high school. Also, as part of the two nineteen capital project phase two. Right now, we were told we have some long lead times on two small generators. Which may push the completion date project to spring of two thousand and twenty-two. There is also a proposal to add two additional area lights. To the light path on the Cooksaki campus. Going down from the elementary school towards Washington Avenue. Originally, we had forecasted for lights to be put along that path, what's being requested now is to additional lights for total of six. Down there. We also have some change orders proposed to provide security fencing around the newly installed generators, but black vinyl fencing with slats. And. What we do have an issue with that we've had is the, we've had thirty-five. Lights on our Cooksaki campus, of those thirty-five, there's only between roughly about fifteen that are not working. What's being suggested is that we wait to the electrical component of our infrastructure within the school. The electrical components are fixed and working properly before we address those light issues. In the Cooksaki campus, only because we don't want to repair those lights without that infrastructure being completed because. The professionals are telling us that that is the issue why those lights aren't working adequately on that. Let's see.
Thanks, thank you, Bart.
I still got some other things.
All right.
Let's see. We're also waiting for proposals to pour concrete pad at EJA here for relocating the dumpsters. And we anticipate using DLC electric to make some electrical improvements in the incubator incubator room and the former elementary computer lab. So that's my report.
Thanks, Mark. The budget planning task force.
Yeah, the budget committee just had a meeting previous to this meeting, so we're still working on what what this task force will accomplish. And we were learning about the budget process.
Thank you. Expanding community connections, Randy, did you want to speak about the Duquette trip?
Yeah. Last Friday, almost forty of our high school students were able to go over to DuCavan. It was part of National Manufacturing Day and Week, and so DuCavan invited us over, so they were able to. See the whole plant in action. Hands on with machines a little bit, a bunch of other activities that went on, we're still waiting for some, we didn't, we're allowed to take photos in there, they have to take the photos because they do some. Top secret stuff in there apparently with some of their parts, but. So the the kids had, you know, obviously enjoyed it, certainly an eye-opening experience, they're looking for workers. You know, every day over there and they're certainly well-paying jobs, you know, and good careers for there, so. So I think it was a great career exploration experience for those, for the kids, they could certainly see what they're doing in a lot of their. Tech classes, how that relates to, you know, directly right into a job and a career in air in aerospace, so. I want to thank Mr. Crawford for helping organize that and doing all the legwork to make that happen, so.
Leadership team reports, superintendent updates.
So COVID protocols, just a couple, just want to reiterate. Right now, through our conversations last week, we are not mandating vaccines for winter athletes at this point. We do a plan to have weekly testing of all athletes at this time for parental consent. I just wanted to point out that Greenville, our neighbor, will be testing all athletes, that's that's a condition of play. Not mandating vaccines, but they are mandating testing of all athletes at that time. I would offer that through our our testing of, you know, right now, we plan to do it, if a team does test positive, then I would. Be recommending or or would have saying that 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 team, regardless of consent, you have to test for two weeks out just to make sure. You know, we've taken care of that in that regard, so the county is really pushing the testing. At this point, we we're asking for a letter from them on that, we haven't received it yet, but they are at least verbally telling us they are strongly encouraging testing. For our winter athletes, they they remind us that if we were to strictly follow the CDC guidance, there wouldn't be winter sports right now because we're still a high transmission county. In that regard, so. So we're trying to find that happy medium at the moment at this time, I know you've received a lot of correspondence on this topic as far as testing athletes or not testing them, etc. You know, so I think we're we're trying to find that, you know, still leaving it in the hands of the parents. But at the same time, making sure we're we're keeping our school safe, you know, and I think testing, surveillance testing will go a long way in doing that. Eventually, we will be also, this is state mandate, testing all of our unvaccinated employees. We do not have a date yet when that'll start, we are still waiting to receive. An ample supply of test kits in order to do that, we are doing this as a as a county and region, so we're going to have support from Questar three BOCs as far as personnel. To assist us with this, so this won't all fall on our 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 school nurses. Right, so we're just waiting for the the test kits to arrive, first of all, and then to get organized, so I don't really have a date when that'll start. I'm gonna guesstimate sometime in November. At this point, we currently have about forty employees who either are not vaccinated or have not indicated that they are. At this point, so they would be required to get tested each week. If they refuse, they they don't come to work for that, so. We're going to continue to encourage our employees to be vax, get vaccinated though.
Okay.
Also, just, yeah, that's it, I guess, I'm sorry, yeah.
Twenty thirty?
Oops, I'm sorry.
The twenty thirty destinations?
Okay, I thought someone had a question. Uh, if you've seen this many times and we just want to keep this in front, you know, we still want to have a vision forward. You know, a lot of times COVID and the world around us right now can kind of drag us down, but we want to at least have a light to go towards. And and our twenty thirty destination, I think, is, you know, again, put together by a large group of everybody in the school community. A couple of years ago at this point now, and. So I just wanted to update the board today that our plan is that each month we're going to. Push out to parents, the community, just highlighting. You know, each of the possibilities within our twenty thirty destination, so they can, they'll they'll see it, they kind of start to understand it, will. Describe what they would see if we we reach these destinations, you know, for each one there, so I just want the the board to be aware of that, that you'll start seeing. You know, a lot of communication revolving around this as, so that's our parents and community are aware. About, you know, where we're headed as an organization, what we're trying to accomplish. You know, as we continue to to move forward as as a school district for that, I think this is, I think it's important that we have this. For us right now, because it can be very easy for us to be distracted by, you know, whatever fire is happening, you know, or so to speak. And it kind of keeps our eye on the on the ball a little bit and knowing our true purpose here is is learning for all kids at high levels. And so they, each of them can achieve extraordinary success, and I think our destinations, if we quit there, make them a reality. You know, CA will be even better than it is today.
Principal interviews.
So yesterday, we had five candidates apply interview for the high school principal position with two committees. So a couple of them will be coming back to have a conversation with the board on Monday. And then we will have a finalist there to recommend after that. And the principal for student support, those interviews will begin. The following week, a week from Monday as well, and actually boom, boom, Monday, Wednesday, the following week, we'll we'll go through that fairly quickly. To to secure a candidate for that position as well, again, our our timeline is hopeful that both folks will be here at CA. I was gonna say Thanksgiving, either before or right after Thanksgiving, depending. On how much time they have to give notice to their current employer. So we had over forty applicants for the high school principal's job and about, I think, thirty-six for the principal's student support.
Hey, thank you. Building and department highlights. Mrs. Miller's available.
All right, so with a focus on our social emotional learning, our staff has been participating in a four-day training in responsive classroom. Tomorrow is the last day for them to receive their final, final day, they had two in June and then to this. This October, um, in addition, our staff has also received training in zones of regulation, which is a cognitive behavioral approach used to teach us how to. Regulate our feelings and sensory needs. Just in order to meet the demands of whatever the situation is, in order for the students to be successful in the classroom. And this is all coming on the the heels of Unity Day, which Mr. Squire mentioned next Wednesday, which all of our buildings will be participating in an orange out. So we encourage our our families as well as all of you to unite against. Against bullying and in support of kindness and inclusion, so all of that is coming at the same time and we're working together as a unified school district. To recognize Unity Day, not only in our elementaries, but at our at our middle school and high school campus as well, so they might mention it as well, so I'm glad you chose me first.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark Kino?
I just want to point out that the food provided this evening is courtesy of the EJA PTO in honor of Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you.
PTO is busy with a variety of activities as they always are, setting up different events for the school year, including an upcoming trick or trunk. Which is next Friday, October twenty-second. It's hard to believe that we are finishing up the fifth week of school, K four students are in their full swing of things. This past week, our kindergarten students make the bowl and apple, apple orchard, and they got to learn all about the orchard and have some apples, cider and of course, donuts. And you probably saw it, you came in the main entrance under Mrs. Fuchsia's direction, starting with our teacher. There are quite a few learning birds and crows out there and she did an activity with them where they linked their part to poetry. So if you think you get a chance, take a look at that, it's pretty exciting for the kids. And lastly, today marked the first day of the girls' running club. Ms. Goke and Ms. Passick set out after school with the thirteen girls that are signed up for the running club. A lot of great things.
Thank you. Dr. Mercer?
Middle school, we've got a lot of great things going on, tenth period is pretty busy, pretty robust, we've got a lot of clubs that have started since, you know, since October. Lots of students staying after, they have a pretty active. Student government, they're in the process of running for offices, including a newly created office of. Governor and Assistant Governor for fifth and sixth grade, which apparently every sixth grader would like to be governor. We moved picture day yet again, I apologize for any inconvenience, it is November first because our number three ninth is the Friday before Halloween. And we thought it was really important for students to be able to. Show some Halloween spirit and dress up, and I did not think that parents wanted school photos. In their costumes, so that would have been super cool for the yearbook, so we're looking forward to that and. I am going on Monday with a group of students from the middle school to bones to pick all of the apples for the big apple brunch. Which I gather is a really, yeah, it's the high school. Class and middle school class are going over and I, it's a big deal, we're picking, I don't know, eleven hundred and fifty-nine apples or something like that, and we're gonna work on. You know, our counting skills and whatnot, so I hope it's it's good weather, but a lot of good stuff going on at the middle school too. I also want to say we we got to celebrate Rotary Students of the Month luncheon and it was in person and it was awesome to be. Back in person, socially distanced, but it was just wonderful to be able to celebrate the students in person and our our Student of the Month was Olivia Kristovich. Fifth grader and her teacher, Missy Somgus, came, it was her first time going to an early one, so it was it was fun, fun time, yes.
What can I say, the high school is coming up, homecoming week and Thursday and Friday night that I I can say is my first time experiencing it here in CA. Thursday was wonderful to see the amount of people who were out with the the bonfire, homecoming, lots of families out, lots of folks out there, I know, I wish this floor was a little bit better for a football team, I gotta say, folks were out there. Enjoying the evening, I have to say, the unveiling was something unique, I have never seen that before, the way the mascot name was revealed and of course, the T-shirt throw right after that. Which was, it was just, it was simple, nobody was jumping on our name, it was kind of cold, watched the kids get their T-shirts and enjoy that. We slowed it down a little bit and turned the corner so that we could do PSATs yesterday, Wednesday, all of our juniors were involved that. We ran the testing during school, so while classes were happening, we were in separate classrooms doing the testing. Much like what happened in the middle school, we had clubs and activities working pretty robustly at this particular time. And again, I I want to reiterate how wonderful it was to celebrate our students on Wednesday, Rotary giving us the opportunity to meet families. And present students, it's really been an outstanding job, our Student of the Month was Emily Gates, Emily has just a very rich volunteer. Service record, if you will, to accompany your high academic achievements, so high schools up and running, we. We had quite a week this week with the short week getting into PSATs, getting into some of the modalities that we needed to get into, but. We're moving, we're moving very, very nicely in high school, yeah, I want to appreciate your support, I appreciate the support of my team, it's making that a lot easier for me.
I think you put a T-shirt there.
Grab that out of that kid's hand.
It was cool, I, I'd love to mention too, District Delta provides T-shirts for all of our staff, so we have gifts for the staff as well, so everyone has a River Hox T-shirt, so. So thank you, Mr. Squire and Mr. Collins for providing that.
Thank you. Katie, thanks a lot.
Hi, thanks for giving an update, one of our students is currently at the New Vision's pathway program and she's doing a wonderful. And she's doing a wonderful job there. She is going to be completing her internship at Kusaki Elementary, where we want to special classes and also general education class. After the end of that, she'll have her Level One Teaching Assistant on certification. And then this is just a pathway for as she goes on to her four-year degree in special education. So we are super excited to report that. And then I also want to just give a shout out to my my clerical. Nicole Corindi, she's done a fabulous job of being a member of our department. And the teachers adore her. And she established that with our students. She recognizes the birthday each month, gives out gifts. Comes, they come to our apartment and she gets those gifts. It's just, it's really awesome to see and her make those connections to those kids. So I just wanted to recognize her today. You know, nice, friendly, fresh out of our department. So, thank you.
Cool.
Good evening. If you look just a little bit farther down on the agenda, we're really excited to see that we have a formal recognition in front of the board this evening. We look forward to welcoming this Leonardo to the team for approval. The cash class has been having a very brisk business this last month. We're supporting teachers and students with their devices. All the team members have been very actively involved with the cash students. It's not just in the classrooms. But in fact, all the team members have been in and out of that class. And it's really exciting to see that. Each member of the team builds those relationships with students who work side by side with students. The teachers have started training on a new website platform, and one that we've already available to the district. Now the teacher websites are available for training. So we started that. We have, we're doing a new approach to tech PLP this year using strands. So the teachers were finally encouraging them to submit. Ideas and offer classes, which we have started. And it's really exciting to see that. And the tech committee is up and running for the school year. And we have two really important things. We are reviewing student management system possibilities that are available for NAREC or even outside of NAREC. As well as we have a three-year tech plan that's due in April. So those are going to be some big tasks for us this year.
Thank you. Anyone comment on the athletic school highlights? Mr. Wilkins? I know we got a lot of notes about teams and. A lot of youth involved with teams. Is that correct? See that? Yeah, okay. And I wanted to mention about the cafe. That's this Saturday. Anybody want to speak to that or? It's sold out, I know, but what the purpose of that is?
Miss Billings on the committee. Karen? Oh, Karen, sorry, Karen.
I asked you on the committee, what is the purpose of the gala? Is that what you heard?
The cafe.
Oh, so the cafe was for the five-one-three to give grants to any staff, teachers that they can write a grant to. Group of people, Bart and I are just the board officers that sit on it. And it's a community members, parents that are part of the committee. And they look at the grants from the teachers and staff and they vote on them. We just did the. The old ice room. We redid that and made it more like a physical therapy space. So that if the kids get hurt, they can go in there and they can get looked at by one of the people that we have. Or higher school game, they can go in and get wrapped up. And the ice machine is still in there, but we kind of revamped it from what I saw pictures of it. And said, that looks so weird. So it's great. But also teachers like here at EJA, they've asked for money for like the sculpture garden that they have here and the other gardens. And they give, they gave money towards the CE PTO to help with the pavilion. So there's lots of different avenues that the money goes towards. And the gala is just one of the many ways that we try to collect funds. To fundraise for the opportunity to provide these grants for our staff and kids.
Thank you.
I don't know if I did it justice.
It's a unique thing. I know other districts do it, but I don't think every district does it. It's a unique thing, though.
It's been, I've only been a part of it for two years now, but it's been really fascinating.
And Dan is the president, Dan Quigley. Dan has been our president for several years. He's decided to step down from that position. So we're gonna move forward. And how we're the president. Something undecided. All right. Well, are we looking for anyone that wants to volunteer? Anyone that wants to volunteer for the cafe, for the public? How does one? Get on the cafe? They can talk to either me or Tara or anyone from the committee or touch base with Mr. Squire on that. If anyone is interested. And we also recognize members of our community who have been successful in life. And we have the wall of honor in our main lobby of the high school that kids and members of the public can see. So they're on display. And a hundred percent of our fundraising efforts go back in students' programs. There's honorees this year, but is that? It is public. David Dorfeld. We also.
Alex Beckey.
Alex Beckey.
Patty McIntyre.
And McIntyre.
And the late.
Late great bucks. Or we. The wall of honor. Great. Okay, school services update, facilities report. Mr. Petromali, Mr. Preston Feldman?
Hello, everybody. With only a few weeks, five, six weeks into the school year, there's a lot going on. First, I'd like to talk about my staff. We have a new look this year in the high school. We have Brent Melner, who's a maintenance position. And we brought over Mike Oldheart, who's doing the janitorial needs at the school during the day. These two together, they're working together and they're knocking out quite a bit. So it's a it's a good change to see. CE has a new lookout, a new look, the day shift with Miss Stephanie Dick. She is learning very quickly and she's fitting right in. The middle school has another new staff member with David Teeter. He's working second shift and he's doing very well. We have a good group of subs this year so far. One person I would like to pick out is Paul Bittston, who's actually been a sub for almost twenty-six years. He pretty much goes wherever you need to him. And he's a, he's a very good worker. My veterans in the middle school, they sit, they shift is Seth Weinstein. The second shift is Matt Petromali and Tony Towns. EJA day shift, Sean DeLucy, second shift, Dylan Roberts, who just received a custodian position, well deserved. High school, second shift is Ed Swart, Armin Vanui, Kyle Roberts, who also covers down here. And that CE, the second shift is Oakley Bathrick and Abby Slurs. The groundskeeper is Ethan Van Slight. Day shifts are totally different than the second shifts. They're both as important, but they're two different animals. During the day, the person running the day shift receives a lot of requests from principals. The ticket system is out there and they're they're on the move constantly. They have three lunches to clean. They have to get in and get out and then have a final cleaning to do. They're dealing with club toilets. Overflowing sinks, lunch spills, bodily fluids, vomit, you name it. These guys are cleaning things up and it's a. It's a, it's a lot. They're outside mowing sometimes. They're cleaning everywhere. Second shift, again, is a totally different animal. This crew is setting up, could be for games, volleyball games. Dances, the tables we've been setting up for these training sessions in the middle school and the high school. Then they methodically go through rooms, cleaning, vacuuming, sweeping, mopping, and just room after room, floor to floor. The grounds person, another nonstop motion, starting in April till the end of October, you're mowing lawns. Weed whacking, and then you start all over again. And you throw forks into the mix. And now you're mowing and painting and mowing and painting and on and on it goes. It's a lot for one person. And then at the lovely time of year, we have snow removal. So the grounds person's jumping on the snowplow with a couple other, with Eric as well. Everyone else is chipping in and shoveling. And last year, I personally took part in one of these snow removals. It's a lot. When you have a lot of snow coming in, there's a lot to do to get the school opened up. So this is going on day after day, night after night. And these guys and gals are keeping the school system, this campus and Kusaki. From a facility side operational, they're keeping it clean. Every one in the school system has a different role to play, whether it's the principal or cleaner. And they're just as important as everyone else and they're doing a great job. And it doesn't stop in the summertime. It's a. It's well, especially when you have a project going on, it's twice as worse because they're in the way, not in the way, but they're in the mix. So you can't do certain things. But rooms get pulled out and then they get wiped down. So the hallways are loaded with all kinds of desks and all the teacher supplies and you name it. And then the room gets shaken down and cleaned and then everything goes back in. And so that goes room after room. So. It really doesn't stop. It makes it harder when there's a capital project going on. So I just want to shout out to them. I know you know, but you don't know, there's a lot that they do. So my hat's off to all them. We have two current projects going on. Bart touched on both of them, so I'm not gonna. Labor any longer. We have phase three going here with the EJA upgrade for the fire alarm system. It's. It's due. It's going to make a lot better for everyone, especially the non-seating panel will be in the foyer like it is at CE. So when the firemen come in, we're not running to the back first of all, seeing where the problem is. Everything is right there. It's a, it's much needed. It's really good. We installed new ovens in the high school, middle school and CE, gas ovens. They're all in state, state yard. They're brand new on the market. They're really good. Working some bugs out with those.
Michael, are there any, are there any openings that are unfilled at this point on your staff?
No, not unfilled. We're putting out another posting for subs. We can always use subs now. Someone's gonna get sick during the day. It's it's a constant shuffle. They have there a lot of times off, personal times, sick times, holidays, vacations and all that, vacation, holiday. So sometimes beginning the year and in the end of the year, you have to really stay on top of it and all that.
Yesterday, I remember the community asking, what is starting to pay for subs?
I'm not sure. You really don't know. Contact Michelle. She can tell you that. Okay. In closing, my daily tasks, I carry a day timer everywhere I go because I can leave my office and get down the end of the hallway and. Get hit up three or four times. Communication is the key with all of us. We have a ticket system here. Kusaki Athens teachers put in. A bookshelf needs to be fixed. A toilet's clogged. The sink is broke. My oven is broken in the cafeteria. On and on it goes. Something outside has to be fixed. So it's a good way to find out. It's broken down from school to school. So you know exactly where it is. Either Eric or I will assign someone to it. So we're constantly going through that, getting supplies and making sure the guys have everything they need. Eric and I work together. We feed off of each other. If we're going down the hallway and Mary Easterburn says, hey, my freezer's down. I'm there. I'm gonna take care of it or vice versa. Eric's jumping in. He handles more of the infrastructure part with HVAC and communications, alarms and heating. But we work together good. I've looked into purchasing everything from cooler shelving. I'm currently working on trying to get new mats. We walk out the middle school doors in the back. They're called walk-off mats. We have them right here. Kids get, they're older, twenty-three years old. So I'm locating those right now. I work with the AD on fields and make sure Ethan knows what has to be lying and what's coming up. I work with Randy, Leslie. I've worked with all the principals. And constantly travel around. I come down to EJA once a week. Meet with Sean, also on the phone, and we meet with Mr. Martino, find out what's going on. Trying to stay two or three steps ahead of the game is is ideal. And I try to make people happy. Doesn't work all the time, but I try to do my best. And the last two items I have is underneath equipment. We do have a dump truck on order from Lacy Ford. But as every other dealership in the United States, they're on back order. And we will know maybe the end of October, just to even get an idea when we're going to receive it. If you still don't have any idea. And we're looking at purchasing a new tool pack. The one that we have is the most widely used piece of equipment on our facilities from plowing. Could have forks picking things up. You name it, aerating fields as and so forth. Everybody uses. We have a big box the guys built for going out, picking up garbage. And it has tons and tons of hours on it. Two thousand eight is one of those purchased. We did look into, I have a state contract. Might be coming to you sometime soon. If it does go through, we can take the one we have now and just spend a few thousand dollars fixing it up. It would come to EJA, which would be. A really good asset down here. And then the pickup truck, when we do get our new one. The existing red one would come down here to EJA to help them out. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, if I can answer.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for that.
Well, good evening. It is great to see you all. And I again, just thank you for your support all the years and that supporting. Our facilities and our operations, both at budget time, but also making the critical decisions that we make to. Improve our infrastructure here and then our project. And you know, I was able to look at some old yearbooks. And you can see in chronological order or timeline of what the school looked like in the seventies and what it looks like today every year. So if you ever find an old yearbook, see what the hallways look like, see what the sports fields look like, and then take a moment to see what they're. I want to say it's the decorative projects and it certainly is. And we've dabbled in just about everyone. And the support is great. The school board and all those folks that were involved with that. And so with all that being said. You know, with my position and working with Mike now on focusing more on the infrastructure, the systems, the building systems that are so critical. So these are the everyday things that we need to operate and maintain, such as our heating and ventilation systems. And so as we continue to move on and get ready for the winter months, our boilers and HVAC systems are. They go through preventive maintenance system and we go by manufacturer's recommendations for, you know, system checks and things that we need to do. Safety inspections are huge, especially on the boilers and all of these things are tested. And and then, you know, we're ready to, we're ready to heat. We haven't heated yet. It's a beautiful day out here today, being in the mid-seventies. And, you know, but but, you know, the timing of everything and as we're getting our boilers going, we're we're ready to flip the switch and. And provide heat. And on the other side, ventilation and air conditioning as well in the in the summer months and the shoulder months. So there's a lot involved there. And then. Recently, we had a an upgrade to the Edward J Arthur elevator. And what that was called, that was a modernization. But that was brought to us through a capital outlet project. So the elevator here has been upgraded and there's. You know, works a lot better. There's new controls. There's new pumps. Hydraulic systems have been improved. And then with that, we had to put in a fire system in for the elevator. So in the event the fire alarm goes off, the elevator will be inoperable by code. And so for us doing that, we had to put a new head and fire panel here in the lobby. So if you would go into the lobby here, you'll see a brand new fire panel. And down the road, as a capital project moves along, our field devices will then be installed. The old devices will be taken out and we'll have a brand new robust fire alarm system. Speaking of the fire alarms, the existing fire alarm system down at Kusaki campus, there are over five thousand field devices that that fire system monitors. And often, one of those fails on me or gives me a little bit of a problem, what we call a troubled condition. And so. And so what's nice about this brand new fire alarm system is telling me exactly what the problem is and where it is. Before with an old zone system, it was just a guessing game. And so I, I am very pleased with, with the fire alarm system and how it's integrated with the bell system. The clock system, the PA lockdown is all in one nice robust system. So and then we have some good folks that come in and there's a problem, they're fall away. And I get the certified technicians, the folks who know, have a shovel chute. And we work together with those folks all the time. So one thing we did find in the fire alarms system, it needs to be inspected annually and tested. So all our smoke detectors and our devices are activated and tested. So they use actual smoke to set the fire, the smoke detectors on. So we test every device. And one of the things that we had found was that there's some functions of some door closures. So when the fire alarm goes off, there's a number of functions that go off. And the actual alarm going off, ventilation shuts down and our doors, our fire doors are to close, are supposed to close. And we had an issue over in the middle school and the high school and we noticed that the doors were not closing. And so, and these were probably about six sets of doors that we're having issues with. And then plus the ones over at the high school. And so we had some flags for now down and we came up with a plan of how we're going to address those doors. And we'll get, we'll get back up in the business there with that. And the other thing too is, you know, along with the HVAC, working with the EPC folks and ecosystems. We, we rely on our control system. So we have a building automation control system. So I can look at every classroom, every system that provides heat and air conditioning. Both in-house and I also have remote access. And so a big thank you to our technology services folks that provide the servers and also our access to the service so that we can do the work that we need to do. Not only troubleshooting, but there's also preventive maintenance things that technical building services does. The EPC folks also have access. So as they're coming in and adding new devices and giving us new parameters, they're able to come in into the system and then work on that and make some changes. The biggest, the nicest thing about it is if, you know, Leslie would text me and says, a little cold in the library in the middle school. And I think some of you would say, okay, I can address that and I can go right to my laptop at my house and make any change I need to do. And so that's, you know, quite, quite an improvement. And it's, as we're going now in integrating the high school system, as we are transitioning from our old steam plant to the new hot water system. There's controls, new controls that are in place to run all those systems. And we're going to integrate that into my existing building management system. And we'll be able to, to continue on, do what we need to do to, to make this, you know, the system to work effectively, efficiently. As we're making some changes and, and it's been very good. And I, I want to say that the folks from ecosystems and their engineers and their managers, they've been an outstanding crew. And I want to say kudos to the, the mechanical folks that are working here. And it was a massive project to do what we did at the high school. And from ripping out those old steam boilers and then putting the condensing boilers in and we're going to see great, great efficiencies. So, so we're, but I'm, you know, I said, I'm very pleased with the workers. They're, they're knowledgeable and they're certainly taking it hard, you know, as we are owners. And as I say, here's the owner. And then, you know, we're involved with that as well. And then another project here, we're going to be taking care of, you know, top dressing the stadium field. I know Mike's been sharing about what Ethan's been doing. And so top dressing is kind of a little bit more involved process of aeration, top seating. We're going to be, top dressing itself, we're going to, takes about forty tons of sand and maybe a soil mixture. And we're going to dress up the new stadium field. We've been working and playing on it for a number of years and the conditions, you know, have changed. Where we're starting to see when we mow, we're feeling dips and bumps and things. And so all that's going to be smoothed out and nice. And then it'll be finalized with the fertilizations. So we're gonna, you know, see a big, big improvement to that. Greener World Company is, they did our fields, I want to say probably twenty years ago, back when Roy Dale was our coach. And he brought him in. He used those, he used them down in Ravina before they had their artificial turf to come in. And so we've had Joe here before. And so we're, you know, we're looking forward to have that done. That should be coming up here sometime in November. And we'll have that once the, the sporks is over and on the field and then we'll run on to that. And then, and then, oh, roof leaks, yeah, our old faithfuls, I call them. But yeah, with the tropical systems this year that were coming through, of course, we've seen massive amount of wind driven rains and heavy rainfalls. And so the rain was coming in, in a lot of places. The one thing though, is that we improved the roofs over the elementary and also a portion of the middle school. And that was done during the last project. We did not have one leak in that location over there. So I seen some, some good results out of that. On the other side, we were, had some issues at the gym lobby, the main gym over in the middle school. And in a couple of the hallways where the rain would just wash against the side of the building and then come in. We're thinking maybe coming through some loose brick mortar. So it's just something that we're looking at. We certainly don't want to have that in our, in our buildings. But we're gonna take, take a quick action to get these things done. That's about it that I have for you. And again, I just want to thank you for, you know, being supportive with us. One thing that I want to finish up on is there's future capital outlet projects coming up. And I know Bart had mentioned about exterior light replacements. And we're also going to be looking at replacing some aluminum storefront doors here in the elementary schools. And these are these silver doors behind you. They're original to the building. These are nineteen sixty nine vintage. So we're gonna have some good new working doors put in place in both elementaries as we look down the future for some capital outlet projects. That's it. And again, I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions? Anything, please, let me know, yes.
With the fire system volunteer Kusaki, do we do any training with the fire departments?
Yes, actually we do. And yeah, the fire chiefs, as they respond or any new system that comes in. I include, you know, the folks in Kusaki and here and as well as Athens. I have phone numbers for the fire chiefs too. And, you know, they're certainly going to be involved in, in, you know, learning the new systems. And if there's any something new, like the new boilers, they're going to be going in. We're going to tour the boiler rooms and look at the emergency shut offs, things like that. And then there's drill opportunities. Kusaki, I see is on campus a lot. They call me. So we're going to bring a ladder truck. Absolutely. You know, it's better to, you know, have them there and training it. So they, they know how to get up to, you know, take care of it. If our business could be an emergency, but we're glad to have them there with us. With that, yes, certainly involved with the fire departments. Yep.
Eric, where that roof leak is in the main gym, what's the age of that roof?
The main gym, that's, that roof was put up in two thousand. And so it's beyond its warranty. And that roof was captured when we were talking about replacing the, I want to say the east side of the middle school. So we stopped pretty much where the library is and maybe the bandroom area. And then the remaining, the west side of the middle school. You know, as we've captured the need to replace that roof, and we'll be looking to, to get that replaced. In the meantime, roof inspections go on. We do an annual roof inspection. And they go up and they clean the roofs. They clean the gutter, or the gutters and as well as the drains up there. But every once in a while you'll find something come in. And with a long span roof like that, it could be over here in the corner and dripping over here. So that's like one of the last ones that I, I'm gonna wait for the next rain and take a look at it.
The second question is, just refresh my memory on that drainage ditch. That's alongside the new soccer football practice field. When is that work scheduled to be placed to clean it out?
Okay, we don't have, we don't have a date or, or a date for that clean out yet. Leslie and I were talking about that and we wanted to include, you know, one of our local contractors to come in and take a look. The big issue, the issue there is the height of the, of the ground to what the water level is in the swale. So we had to come up with something that, that's gonna, gonna work. And because our slope is, you know, our percentage is like, that's like a billiard table up there. So I know right now, you know, Ethan has been talking with me. Tried, we've been adding fill, but it just moves the puddles around.
One thing I noticed, there's been a practice of putting like all these grass clippings and these certain amounts of dirt that are next to that, that drainage ditch. Once we get that cleared, that work is done, that cleared out. We take a look at maybe putting those items, not store them.
Once that cleans out and we have a nice visual on that, that those items will be in there. Yeah, we could certainly, we have areas to put those. It just seems to, you know, some of those areas are closer to where we are with the back. It was with the lower back room. And, you know, we could certainly, you know, get that out of the plane. You know, we have enough property. I think we could find a place to put our clippings. All right, thank you.
I wonder if there's a heavy rainstorm. And maybe if you're here, if somebody's here, that's good to go around and look at where the leaks are right, if there are any like that.
Yeah. Yes, we, you know, when, when it does rain and I'm in touch with Ed Swergeland, he's on the second shift. And we'll text each other and say, how are the old faithful? What's going on? And he'll say that there's nothing happening or I got a leak. And it was one that we were, you know, that we were managing. And then of course he reports all new leaks as well. And we find those from time to time. But, but yeah, we're certainly connecting. When I know that there's a big drop of rain and, and I know that someone's there, I'm reaching out to them and that no guys are all, they know where they are. And, and we take a conscious effort to look. I think a long weekend or an overnight, there's times where we, you know, we're surprised, hope there's a new puddle on the floor. Nothing major, but you know, over a period of time, we do have some issues. And, and then with the wet ceilings and things like that, we want to make sure we open those up. So that we're providing air and we won't have any, any issue with microbial growth or anything like that. We want to make sure that that doesn't happen as well. So we'll try to nip those things in the bud as quick as we can. And I've had the roofers here on a number of occasions, the high school second floor, we had about three or four leaks up there. And a roofing company come in, they stripped off a hundred and thirty feet of a drip edge of the flat roof on the very top of the high school in the west end. And so that repair was made. It did rain a little bit since that happened, but we noticed there were no leaks up there. So it's just a matter of just managing and fixing them and then looking back and saying, okay, let's get up there again and see if we, we see it again. And then we bring them back in and say, hey, listen, we still have problems. So that's always going on.
And you get a chance to ask the staff to be sure to let you know if they see something?
Oh, yes. And I've had my, my custodial staff, but also staff in general. And I've had leaks that came to me as reported with the ticket system. And I say, oh, great. Thank you for letting us know. We're not always in the rooms. And then, so we, I've had that from time to time. So, you know, so certainly there's eyes and ears out there helping us out.
Somebody slipped it.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then like you said, those leaks come up, you know, pretty quick. And, and what we do to manage them is we put a barrel, we put a wet floor sign down, you know, in those areas. You'll see them sometime when you walk through. Like, okay, we're gonna keep this here until the next rainstorm. And then sometimes the lighter rainstorms are maybe a typical storm and it won't appear. But it's the heavy, heavy storms that we've seen the increase in.
Real quick, Bart, just follow up on your question tonight. You'll be approving the contract to do a new survey of our entire campus up there. And that's the first step. So we make sure and we do drainage, it drains the right way.
Okay, instructional services update.
Yes. So you have copies of the list annual targets? We just want to give you an opportunity to get any questions to the principals about those targets.
I've said it before, but when you ask for a hundred percent of something to happen, you'll never, you'll never hit it. So I, I don't know if that's what, if that's what you want, but it's just hard to. It is. It's, it's, you're always gonna do. It's just from doing similar things. It's just tough to say a hundred percent of anything. I did see something. There was, there was a team, it looks like with the middle school. There's a team of people, it's like pants. Teachers, I'm gonna see that. There was a team of people.
Yes, yes. The step plan, because middle school is the school in need of improvement, is required that you have certain membership on the committee that makes that one. So yes, you have to have students, you have to have parents and then staff. If you have any that come up later, feel free to.
Okay, just, we've had emails and letters that were sent to the board have been or will be, or are waiting to be opened and shared from a number of people, Kristen Johnson, Christina Bernal, Shannon, Melissa Slater, Sandra Miller, Marina Massey, Kimberly, the tow well, there's already passive, Don Carlson, Captain Fettle, Sandra Miller. Sales and, and they're square with responder designated response. And we can ask how many questions we have from those. People, politicians would like to come up and speak to the board and let us know who you are. And what you'd like to talk about. Stephanie Van Valkenbergh.
Hello, I come here tonight. I have not come and spoke in front of you before. I am an alumni graduating class, nineteen ninety. I moved away briefly and came back to raise my children here because I love the community. And I at one point loved the district. I am going to say not so much anymore. Last year, I was thrilled to be a part of Kusaki Athens because of the way we handled COVID. I work in East Green Bush. I watched Maple Hill suffer. I watched Columbia suffer. I watched Think About Cream suffer. And we held a talk and I applaud you all for your efforts last year. This year disgusts me. I'm going to be very honest and it starts with you, Mr. Squire. I am disgusted. We are not holding everybody to the same level of accountability with this. My child gets migraines. He has had migraines since fifth grade. I get a phone call. Matthew's in the office. He has a headache. He has to go home and can't come back until he tests negative. I fought it. Understandably, he has had this going on. She looked back. I'm not blaming the school nurse this year. She's new. Abby knew. Matthew inside out. And then she got it. I was told that when they're symptomatic and the list, the symptoms just keep getting bigger and bigger. That they cannot return without having a negative test. And yet we have a leader who can sit fully symptomatic at our homecoming event, fully symptomatic, throwing out T-shirts to our, to our students without a negative test. I want to know who's being held accountable. I want to know why he's not being held to the same level of accountability that our students are for chronic illnesses that they've suffered their whole lives. Why are we not holding him at the same level of accountability? He's gonna turn around and say he wasn't symptomatic then. Then if he wasn't symptomatic then, he can't go to the gala this weekend, correct? He doesn't meet the criteria. So he's backdating the lives.
We can't talk about.
Okay, you can't. I get it. I'm not asking you to talk, but I can talk. It's my three minutes.
Right.
So you can't talk about it. I understand that. So you can't talk about it, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, the lies. The intimidation that he held over his staff is disgusting. The retaliation that happens when they don't play into his hand is disgusting. The way he treats his staff when nobody's watching is absolutely appalling, and they're all afraid. That's not a leader, that's a tyrant. And it's disgusting across the board. I am, I'm absolutely sickened by somebody that we call our leader in our district. And I really hope that he falls under a little bit more scrutiny than he has been this year, it's, it's appalling, absolutely appalling. I have nothing further to say, but I hope he gets held to the same level of accountability that my child has to be held on.
Mr. Fieldman? There are three minutes to this.
Oh, you're gonna give me.
I didn't need to say that.
I know, I know, but you gotta, I had to listen to Mr. Beston's elders, so you gotta listen to me. So I'm sure by now that uh, some of the concerns I'm presenting tonight have made their rounds. And I'm standing before this board tonight, as I did on March eighteenth. Where I said that accountability was coming, and alluding to that. When I presumed that there would be a big crash of some sort of the troubling things that were happening here at CA. And on it, August nineteenth, when two young ladies came forward to discuss their experiences about being bullied at school. Nothing was done immediately, nothing was done until this week. Couple days after August nineteenth, one of those young ladies stood up for herself and was suspended for five days. But this week, we saw what happens when the mean girl bully doesn't play by the rules or doesn't get her way. You know, last year I applauded this district for its handling of the COVID crisis. And this year, we are far from anything worthy of an applause. In fact, I believe we are far worse of a situation this year than last, and we've only just begun. Some will go on to say that it's about politics, some will say that it's about hypocrisy, and in my opinion, it's both. We have a bully problem, we have a COVID problem, and we have even bigger problems behind districts' closed doors. But you can't remove these ones. Or the problems without removing the root of them. The one thing I know about most problems in the workplace, in any organization, or in the community, is that those problems often start at the top. When the top is where those problems should be ending. Last year, graduating seniors had their year marred by COVID, marred by the thought of losing a beloved mascot. Of losing a legacy, of leaving their alma mater and not being able to return to that as they grew to know it. But that's not even why I'm here tonight. I'm standing before this board tonight to discuss the elephant in the room. To discuss the top of the district's food chain and say the bullshit stops now. It stops tonight, it stops here, and it stops because you work for us, not the other way around. We are the parents, the teachers, the nurses, the custodians, the supporting staff. And we deserve and we demand to be respected and to be heard. We demand that our superintendent hold himself to the same standards imposed on us and our children to hold his own family and student accountable to those standards, to remind himself that he is an employee and he is not a supreme entity. He's not even a good leader, because a good leader leads, a good leader stands with people, like interim Dr. Fernandez, like Jim Martino. Great guys, engaged, friendly, present, and that matters. Honesty matters, transparency matters, creating an environment where your staff and your board members respect you. Where your community and your parents trust that you're educating their children and to be charged with educating them too. Not gaslighting them, Mr. Squire, not lying to them, not manipulating, coercing, and certainly not giving them unfair ultimatums. Definitely not being a hypocrite, certainly not allowing their quarantine childhood to gain functions and to not even wear a mask as is demanded of our children. When we cry allergies, you tell us that it's a symptom of COVID. When we cry symptoms, you called it an allergy. I have a few choice words on my tongue, but a little decorum goes with keeping my time at this podium. And I'm asking this board to investigate allegations of our superintendent taking influence over the clearing of certain players under quarantine in order to play in games where maybe they shouldn't. I'm asking this board to hold this superintendent accountable for encouraging other administrators to get their staff. Mr. Donahue, will you be dressing as an ostrich for Halloween? Because your fucking head is in the sand and it needs to stop. Listen to me right now, give me my time and I will, I, I want my time. I ask this board to investigate accusations of an individual with a made up position, which I think is actually Mr. Petromal. billed as a stifling position for telling those he charged with coaching and keeping employees, that if the county calls, say you were masked. Say you go home for lunch, say you weren't around, and that's what I told Laura Churchill at the DOA this morning in a conference call. Basically, asking them to lie, lie is not what we do. We believe in the science, or do we believe in manipulating that science and manipulating the people that you think work for you?
To be able to come and talk to.
No, no, you sit here willfully ignorant, and you have blazing over the truth as we present ourselves to you. And I want this board to call for Randy Squire's resignation. The grossest comment of the community at risk with identical and arrogant behavior and agendas that always seem to serve Randy. There's a mutiny on this ship, and someone's gonna walk in. Right, board members, check your email.
Can I have my for a minute?
Yeah, well. We do have to adhere to the protocols. So that everybody has a chance, and we have more business to do when it wants the public input is done. So asking you people again, adhere to the protocols, so we can do that. And I'm asking people too to try to treat everybody here with respect. We're all your neighbors. We're all trying to do, we're all trying to do what's right.
For who?
Nobody's getting paid here on this table, so we're just trying to do what we can.
But it's for who?
Okay. Jen Weinstein?
Hello. My name is Jennifer Weinstein, and I am here tonight because my sassy Irish grandmothers taught me that if I have something to say, I should say it. And when I say something, I better be able to stand behind it. I would like to address the board about the district's current COVID protocols as it relates to contact tracing and quarantine, and present you with what many see as dangerous loopholes in those protocols. I know and respect that you have to follow the guidelines set in place by the authorities that they. But currently, I believe them to be that a quarantine is necessary based on a person's onset of symptoms, regardless of when that person actually tests positive, which in and of itself is a bit confusing. The dangerous part of this is that when you allow someone to declare the dates that work best for them, those dates cover a time period when they perhaps knowingly attended our classes, meetings in our offices, and homecoming events. All of those situations now become potential super spreaders. I recently posted on my personal Facebook page a question, what are rules, what are guidelines, who cares? And gained the attention of some important people. Tonight, I'm here to tell you why I ask those questions, because I know firsthand what's at stake here, so what? Because I sat on couch two days ago when our eighth grader had a cold because his COVID tests were pending, because that was the responsible thing to do. Because my husband contracted COVID so early on in twenty twenty, he couldn't even get to the hospital, he tested, because it wasn't even a thing yet. And I hope to God I never see him that sick again. Because my sister contracted COVID on St. Patrick's Day of twenty twenty and was so scared, she kept on charade of our family group texts, the days upon days of a fever over a hundred and three, so nobody would worry about. Because my mother's entire ovarian cancer treatment plan took place during this pandemic. So then she can't afford to get a cold, the flu, or even COVID. And most importantly, because COVID killed my uncle last Thanksgiving day. So yeah, this is why I ask, what are rules, what are guidelines, who cares? When they're observed as not being respected, I asked that on Facebook as it pertained to CA and in general. On the small scale here, I have to ask, why aren't we protecting our students and our staff by following them to a T, no matter who and inconvenience? Thank you.
Hello, dear mommy. Hello, um, first, I would like to start off, and um, I have a couple of things, uh, one was with the reconfiguration. Um. I was appalled after reading in our local paper that a board member said that only eight people show up to the meeting and it's the same people over and over, and that we're a small percentage of the community. And that, what else are we supposed to do, was the question. Well, first off, it's not just eight people, as we can see, um, many people, many residents have spoken out about it. What are you supposed to do? Well, you're supposed to listen to the community that you voted in, and let's have a fair vote. Um, I feel that the new proposal is just a fancy rewarding of the original proposal, just another sales pitch. I do not feel that the board or most of the board or the superintendents being truthful, sincere, or transparent in regard to the concerns of our reconfiguration. All I keep hearing is that it's pretty much a dumb deal. I read the new proposal, and I'm still concerned about the busing, um, the amount of kids on the bus and the children's classroom size increasing. And still unsure about any real benefit to the children. I'm also concerned about the severed relationships, which would be ending all too soon. As I stated before, this is just not the right time to do this, we have more important issues than worrying about um, something that is not to be, need to be changed at the moment. My question is, how would we go about voting on the issue, would it be the same way that we voted on the mascot? And if the answer is yes, then I question the integrity and correctness of the voting system that you would implement. The voting should happen the way we vote for a budget, this would ensure a fair vote count and have both communities involved. At the last board meeting, we were told that the kids would have support from teachers and staff if they're having difficulty adjusting with implementing reconfiguration. I find that comical from what we see in cases of bullying. Go tell someone, that's what we heard from the president of the board, as the principal of the middle school and superintendent sat there with no response. However, I do commend the few board members that acknowledged the students as seen genuinely concerned when the student responded, I did, and nothing gets done. And it ends up with students getting into a physical altercation, which is what happened with that particular individual. This starts with the people in this room, the adults. How do we expect to end the bullying and fighting when the adults retaliate against employees who speak out or are not on board with their plan? School just started and there have been multiple fights, how are we going to address this situation and keep students safe? Next, I would like to discuss COVID protocols. The COVID policies we currently have are problematic and should be viewed as a liability. We have one of the highest cases in Grand County, as most of you already know. What are we going to do about this serious issue? By allowing vaccinated COVID positive teachers and staff back in the school, we are creating a danger to the community and younger students. They're not able to be vaccinated due to age, medical guidance, et cetera. Instead of trying to worry, or instead of trying to worry about things like reconfiguration and mascot changes, we should perhaps be worrying about the most important things like COVID and keeping the kids safe and the staff, and put more effort into things like mental health for our children who are struggling. We need to put an end to these issues before they escalate into something that we can't manage. Perhaps that's why we're seeing, I'm almost done, okay?
I hear you.
Perhaps that's why we're seeing an increase in bullying and fighting, because kids are stressed out and they're acting out and don't know where to go for help. I thank you for your time, and if we have time, I'm sorry, that's fine. And if you have time later, I'll make sure to show you the video, because talk is cheap, but when you see it up late on video, you can see.
I'm gonna keep it short, and I I'm speaking to the same things that that have already been spoken to. I am concerned that the board, a board member would misrepresent the number of people who have spoken out or written, attended multiple forums, attended one forum, to express their concerns about reconfiguration. It's just not true that it was only eight people. Um, so that's usually either intentionally lying about it or um, just disregarding the previous input. You shouldn't have to come multiple times on the same exact topic, if you've already spoken or written an email, et cetera. Moving on to what is a more pressing issue right now is what I consider to be a COVID crisis in our school, how it's being managed is horrendous. Um, I'm really concerned about my unvaccinated child who is in the middle school, he's not eligible. And he has to sit at a table, not socially distanced, eating lunch with other unvaccinated children. That is not being conscious of the spread of COVID. That is essentially gonna spread COVID, once any of those students get it at a given table. I am concerned about the mask breaks, they're frequent, um. They're really not that necessary, but okay, you want to give the mask breaks, then they then they have to quarantine. We're not quarantining kids by claiming they're wearing masks, but if they're not wearing masks, if they're taking them down for any portion of that day. Then they're exposed, potentially. That's unacceptable, we have to protect our vulnerable children, we have to keep them safe. We need to prioritize the health and safety of all of the children, and especially those who are not eligible for vaccination. They cannot protect themselves.
Vaccines do not stop.
I don't believe that.
It does not spread. It does not, look at the fucking West Side, asshole, it's a piece of the law.
You don't get to speak to me like this because you have a ticket. We have all the tickets, so get out there and turn me, speak your mind.
Okay, moving on. Does your vote affect? Okay, we have children, that's why. It's enough. It's enough, oh, please, we're at a public meeting, okay, please, we'd like to continue with our meeting, thank you. That's superintendent's recommendations. Broken matters.
That's not, there's still people. We're not done. I signed up to speak to our. Do you have? And then you, I need, did you hand in your form? I did, um, I didn't know that that was one. Okay.
Okay.
Two of you will come to speak. I kind of, yeah, we both signed up, sorry, we've not come before. Good evening, Board of Education members, my name is Sandra Miller, I have children in the middle school and at EJ. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight, I'm here to follow up on the email that I sent over the weekend. With regards to how the district is handling COVID cases within our school. I feel that the district has become very lax in the procedures and protocols around the virus, which has resulted in so many more positive cases throughout our campuses. My fourth grade daughter was exposed to COVID in her classroom last week, and the district did not feel it was necessary to contact our family and to let us know. We heard rumors about the exposure and that the teacher was in the classroom with symptoms and a positive child at home. I spoke with the school nurse who directed me to Mr. Spires, saying he has final say. With my, I spoke to Mr. Spires then with my concerns and my frustrations. Informing that he works directly with the Department of Health and follows their recommendations for contact tracing. After speaking with several other parents within the classroom, it became apparent contact tracing had not been done. Lo and behold, my nine-year-old, who's not eligible to be vaccinated, tested positive for COVID. My husband, my son, and I all tested negatives. That was last Thursday. When I was contacted Saturday by the Department of Health, they knew nothing of a teacher in EJA testing positive, and they were very upset. I explained that she resides in a different county, but the woman at the Green County Department of Health emphasized to me that this district is responsible to report that positive case because she's teaching in our schools with our children. You can imagine my frustration that the school told. You can imagine my frustration, that the school told me it did not match the Green County Department of Health. How can Mr. Squires say to me that the district worked with the Department of Health on this situation, in particular, if the Department of Health knew absolutely nothing about it? I'm very concerned that we are skirting around this virus and its severity to try to keep our numbers low and look good like we did last year. Last year, the strand did not affect children the way it is this year. The Delta variant is strong, and there were many more preventative measures last year versus this year. We seem to have relaxed some of the preventative measures, and the number of cases is steadily increasing. I feel as a parent, I have the right to know if there is an exposure in my child's classroom, and I should have been notified. Our children in that particular classroom are not masked the entire time, which makes them all an exposure. If I'm expected to monitor and be honest with the school district about my child's symptoms, and if they're ill, and I'm expected to keep them home, I expect the same of the school district and the teachers within the classroom. How should I feel safe to send my students to school when I do not feel that this school district has the health, the safety, or the well-being of my children at their forefront? I felt it was necessary to come here this evening and share my experience in hopes that you can take a deeper look at the processes that are currently in place with regards to contact tracing. It appears that while parents are being told that the school is working hand in hand with the Department of Health, it's very clear that they're not. Thank you for your time.
I'm just going to, speaking about the same issue that was just spoken about, my daughter is in class. I'm also a teacher in another school district, so I know a lot about how contact tracing goes around schools. So I just want to start with that. On Friday, October 1st, a staff case was reported at EJA. A week later, I was contacted after another student case occurred. So a full week later, I was contacted that my daughter was quarantined because of close contact with the student. It was then, a full day and a half later, that the entire class was quarantined by the district of, by the Department of Health. So the question I think that we need to ask ourselves is how many people were passively exposed? My daughter typically goes to her grandparents in the morning, and I can't get her to school. How many people were exposed because people were not, because contact tracing was not properly done in this case? I did some research. CA has had thirty-four cases since the start of the school year. Patfield, who has only about a hundred more students than we do, has only got twenty-two cases. RCS has four hundred more students than CA does, and they have only had twenty-two cases. Even since then, we're early in school districts, obviously, everybody lives in closer quarters. They have four hundred more students than we do, and they've only had eighteen cases this year. I've been clearly echoing what everybody else practically before me has said, we have a problem, and it seems pretty clear to me that COVID has been transmitted in the schools, and the contact tracing is not being done well enough. I can't prove it. Maybe you have access to the information, but when the teacher case was declared, and it was stated contact tracing was done, according to my daughter's reports, no child in that class was quarantined from the teacher case. I have how many things to say. Contact tracing needs to be improved, obviously. It came up on the live earlier this week, why aren't specific classes modified? There's lice in my daughter's class. I get a note. If there's a strep throat in her class, I've gotten all these notes over the years. It is still protected health information. Nobody's privacy is being violated, but I still know that my daughter was exposed in her classroom to lice or strep throat. I would think with COVID, that would be even more important, and yet, that is not being done. If our contact tracing is not going to be faithfully done, and it's due to, then I think the notification needs to be more careful. Thank you.
All right, Superintendent's recommendations, program matters, personnel issues. Motion consent for P1A, B2, I, B, C, D, six, A, B, C, D, E, M. Motion for those. Any discussion? I oppose. So, here. Does this matter? Motion consent for C1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. That's it. Motion for that. Second, any discussion? All clear. I oppose. So, here. Down the table. It was an exciting weekend, and the whole week, the events that were students had a good time, and it was important, I think, for the community to be involved.
I'm going to pass.
Just want to recognize and thank Michelle, the senior board clerk. Better thanks, and thank you for, Michelle, for your dedication, all the help that you gave us, and
I'm going to pass.
Well, I go Bart, say thank you, Michelle. Also, moving forward with these meetings and input and everything, I hope that we can all be respectful of everybody's time and everybody's views, and during these meetings, we can come up and people feel free to express their thoughts to us, whether doesn't matter what side of the issue, and that we will receive all of that and listen to it with open ears. And we hope that the community members here are respectful for people that are also giving their opinion, and they do the same. That's all.
I would just like to say that I really appreciate those people that are in the thick of it, working with our students, trying to keep our students safe, and those people that spoke up, even though it was hard to do, I appreciate their hearing from them. I think that's our job as board members to hear from the community, and we, I personally appreciate it, and I know it's not an easy thing to do. And I would also like to say that some of the facility staff was recognized, or all of the studio staff was recognized tonight, and they are like a huge part of keeping our school safe with the cleaning and everything involved is not over by any means, and I just hope that we can resolve some issues moving forward and keep people safe.
I do want to thank Michelle. We always answer. I do want to thank the social staff and our teachers and aides and the ground, the people, like the whole class, the ones that are in the midst. We can't do it without them, and we need to keep them safe.
I'll just be echoing what people said. Thank you, Michelle. Let's work in your future endeavors. Okay. motion executive session, in motion for executive session to discuss.
Mike, if you want to address the EJA situation, I'll do that now in public. People have clear information. It seems like there's a lot of false information out there. It's up to you.
Want to speak to that now?
Yeah, so, on end of September, we had a teacher who had symptoms. We sent her home. As the day went on, on October 1st, we got notification that a teacher tested positive. At 10:16 a.m., an email was sent to Green County. But we, four individuals who are all part of the contact tracing team notifying them of that teacher testing positive and two potential other persons as far as contact tracing goes. When we find out when anybody tests positive in our school, I, the contact tracing team, which is the school nurse and the principal, right, determine if anybody is within six feet of that exposed person for fifteen minutes or or. Now, what is new this year is they're not taking out a whole classroom like they did last year. That's, that's that's across the state. Nobody's doing that at this point, right? And so they're looking, who was within six feet of that exposed person for fifteen minutes or more during the day? If I'm a kid in one corner of the room and the kids in the other corner, and we're not sitting next to each other, they're not going to be quarantined, right? That's, that's the process that's being used by the county and every county, I'm aware of, in the state in that regard. So in the case of a teacher, she did not sit next to any students for more than fifteen minutes at a time. She kept her distance. Yeah, she moved around the room, I'm sure, right, but she wasn't with a kid for that long, but that's just, that's the report we got. And I'm not in the room, the principal's not in the room all day. We have to go by the adults in the room. There's more than one adult in that room in that case. It's been our practice at CA, as it is in all the districts in our region. When we have a positive case, we notify the whole district, which we did. We sent out a our email, text there later that day, that we had a positive employee at EJ Arthur. Later that day, we have not had the practice of notifying individual classrooms. I actually checked with my colleagues today. Nobody is doing it. Nobody wants to go there because they feel it'll just add to the stress level and anxiety that may occur, you know, for that. So that is, that's been our practice since March of 2020, of not getting into that level of contact, if you will, because if we were to say that class, notify an entire class, well, you could have been exposed. How does that, when do we stop? Because let's go to a middle schooler. Do we notify all one hundred seventh graders that they may have been exposed to a seventh grader? You know, so it's that's, that's the reasoning behind it. You know, we've had hundreds of conversations at all levels on that, that topic. So we're following the same exact protocols and communication procedures as last year. Didn't change anything from what we did last year. Are there more cases in our district? Yes, there is. You know, compared to last year, you know, total, I think we were fortunate to not really have any cases until the holidays last year, and as you know, we were lucky in that regard compared to a lot of school districts that we caught up in the spring for that. As far as the county, I think we do lead the county. I know there's a district or two in Columbia County that are experiencing the same type of level of positives this year. You know, COVIDs, and I'm not going to speculate why, you know, at this point. You know, because people have their opinions on that in that regard. So, you know, in regards to EJ Arthur, we've been, we just followed the exact same steps we've always followed. You know, we heard it's a positive case. All right, let's contact trace, and there's some principal, take care of that. They put it on a spreadsheet. We forward the spreadsheet up to Green County, and then they let us know and confirm, yes, they need to be quarantined, etc., at that point, and then the communications happen in that regard. So nothing's changed. We, yes, we are having more positive cases. You know, and I don't, I'm not a doctor. I don't have an answer for that, you know. All I know is we're following all the same procedures that we do in that regard. In regard to mask breaks, we are considering tightening those up more so than we already have in that regard, and again, there's you know, a hundred and twenty classrooms going out at once. We have to rely on everybody to follow those protocols as they are written and as what the expectations are. So as we start closing our windows for the winter, so to speak, I anticipate us lessening the amount of mask breaks in our schools as a result of that, so. That's it.
I guess I just want to know, I guess from my school district's perspective, when you have this new protocol where you're only notifying a few kids, it's because you have a seating chart, and the seating chart is the kids are supposed to stay three feet apart, and it's supposed to be facing forward. They have, well, now they can face each other, but that's why you have a seating chart that's supposed to be turned in every day for every week when to change it. But when the teacher, at least in an elementary school, and maybe it doesn't happen at EJ Arthur, which I would think that that's not true, but you and the teacher are going around, and you're, you're, you should be, I would hope that it happens here, checking in with your kids, making sure that they're understanding what's happening, like you're not standing in front of the classroom lecturing them. That's, that's just not best practice, so if that is true, that you didn't believe your teacher was around those kids for any significant amount of time, whether it was two minutes here, three minutes at ten o'clock, you know, you know what I mean? Like, this doesn't make any sense to me, so maybe you need to, in the future, if a teacher tests positive at an elementary situation, class, or even the middle school or wherever, you might want to call or let the whole class know. I just, it just doesn't make sense that you wouldn't have contacted a whole class because the teacher should not be teaching from the front of the room. They should be going around and making sure their students understand what's happening in the class.
Again, this is just the practices we've been, I'm always up for reviewing how we do it. This is what we've done it, and we've had multiple teachers at all levels test positive in the last year and a half. You know, it was our first elementary classroom teacher to test positive. So I just, you know, again, you know, I could have those conversations with the county and my colleagues to see what their, their thoughts are on it, you know, in that regard, so. But I just want to make it clear that we didn't change anything the way we've been doing it. This has been the way we've been doing it for a year and a half.
Yeah, the one thing I don't, I'm not sure about, we could talk about, but just why we wouldn't notify a class, why we wouldn't notify a parent of a child in their class that has, and I know we want to protect health information, and that's we have to do that, but I'm just not clear in my head, but why we wouldn't do that? Yeah. So that might be something that we, that we bring up. But that's
The teacher was teaching remotely from home with a sub in the room. It was very evident who the teacher was. Just that, like, sorry, I know it's not my turn, but she was teaching her class remotely with a substitute teacher in the classroom, which I appreciate. So Mr. Martino, if you set that up, thank you, because they didn't lose anything. But as soon as that happened, you know the rumor's true. When your nine-year-old comes home and you see the Google Classroom and the Google Meet's happening, and the teacher's posting all the work, all anonymousness is gone because they're nine, they're eight, nine, and ten. They're not going to not come home and say, mommy, I had a Google Meet today. Okay, well, you don't do that in elementary school.
All right, so we you know, anything else?
Tell me your recommendation as well, that, like, that you and Jamie have this discussion with Mr. Squire and
Well, that doesn't have to be just us.
Well, and rule of us getting together for another board meeting. That's what you want to do.
We have a lot to, there's a lot of things that overlap, personnel-wise, too.
All right, so save it for a minute.
Particularly, if you don't know, I hear what you're saying. Talk about names or specifics, like a meeting. All right, so we need a motion for executive session for personnel and voting on special administration. Second, special favor. I'm sorry, any discussion? Okay. You're done. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, everybody.